Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, October 20th, 2025 Board of Education meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mission statement. Ken, would you be kind enough to read our mission statement?
Be happy to. The elementary school district recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you for that. And we will move over to board introductions. And I'm going to start with Amanda on that side.
Thank you. Amanda Zapata.
Ronette James.
Liz Trumper.
Carmen Rodriguez.
Hello, Ken Zaiman.
Susan Riquel.
Jeff Cap.
Tatiana Messina-Mullen.
Betty Hadlock.
Anthony Scorinzi.
Okay. Welcome again, everyone, to our meeting tonight. We are going to move over to public participation. Do we have anyone in the public wishing to go ahead and do public participation tonight? If so, you'll go head to the podium, state your name and address. So, do we have any takers for public participation? No? Second chance? Okay.
I know. As you were saying, "second chance," I was like, "Well, I do have a question."
Hold on one second.
All right. Then let Susan read.
I gotta read.
One second.
Speakers may offer objective comments to the board concerning school operations and programs. Comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Orange Board of Education personnel or any person associated with the Orange Public School System. Comments about security issues, matters related to due process, negotiations, or grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, FERPA, discussions about students are prohibited absent a written parent waiver. Public participation does not allow for two-way conversation between the board and the participants. We thank you for expressing your thoughts and opinions. All comments will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lauren Gray. I live at 205 Wilson Road. I didn't get a chance to email you guys this, or I would have sent an email to ask. Governor Lamont announced today that there was a $5 million grant in state funding for after-school grants. He announced that there were 41 grants across 30 municipalities that were awarded. And I saw our neighbors Bethany, Milford, and West Haven on here. The grant was for after-school programs that provide academic support and enrichment opportunities beyond the school day. And I was wondering if Orange Board of Education applied for this. I know it's not a two-way conversation, but just wanted to ask because I saw our neighbors on here, and I know how important Century 21 is. My son goes to after-school, and it is a really great program. I just wanted to ask if Orange applied. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I can, and this is to you, not to the, to Mrs. Gray. But as, as we, the board knows, we've applied to many grants. Some we receive, and some we don't. This one, we did not receive. We did apply. But the year before, as you know, we did receive it. Sometimes I use the analogy of our schools, and sometimes I receive calls. So, again, we have four schools: Maryletracy, Turkey Hill School, Peck, and Racebrook. And typically, when one school gets another, the other school say, "How come they've got it, and we haven't?" You know? And I, and I do make that association with the state, too, that it fluctuates. We've talked about, and even Mr. Gray in our previous meeting, he's mentioned about the school security grants. Sometimes we've received it, sometimes we haven't. So, but to the board, just as a refresher to all of you, we have, and we continue to apply. And yes, that notification did come out from the governor today.
All right. Thank you for that update and reminder to us. Any other public, public participation before we close that? No? Okay. We will move on to our consent agenda. I'll need a motion to accept the first item under the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from the September 15th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the September 15th, 2025 Board of Education meeting? Liz, second. Susan? Any discussion? I'm sorry. Oh, Amanda. Okay. Well, I'm going to have to get my seating chart out again. So, I will go with Amanda, and I'm sorry, Liz. And then I still think Susan had her hand up second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Any? And Ken will abstain. Thank you, Ken. Okay. Going to move over to our presentation. Technology update from Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present our technology updates this evening. Our technology staff supports our teachers, staff, students, parents, guardians. We are centrally located here at the Board of Education. We are all cross-trained to handle any issue at any school. If anybody needs any support, they can email our helpdesk@techsupport@orange-ed.org. I just want to take a few minutes to go over some important areas of our website for any new parents to the district or any returning parents to the district. You can find us at www.oesss.org. If you see here on the upper right-hand corner of each of our webpages, we have a language translate tool. This allows any parent to go in, and you can select that language dropdown and pick one of over 250 languages, and it will convert that. What's good about it is it will convert it for every page, so you only have to do it once, which is helpful. We have many different families in Orange, and they speak about 29 different languages. In the top center of our webpage, on every page, is our Family Resources link. This is a link to all of our, it's a repository for all of our frequently, commonly-used pages from our parents. If you're looking for popular forms, you can click on that link and get to our popular forms. We did add a School Messenger link. If you click on that, it will take you to the School Messenger information. School Messenger allows schools to send emergency alerts as well as messages to our parents via phone, text, or email. If parents haven't signed up for School Messenger, they can click that link, and it will take them to this page where it will give them instructions on how to opt-in or sign in to School Messenger. Some parents have contacted our tech support and asked us where on the website is our calendar. We've prominently displayed it here in the bottom of the Family Resources page, but it can also be found at each of our school websites under School Information. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Parents want to go to our Power School portal? Sorry. Parents will want to go to our Power School portal. That's where they will sign into their Power School. There, if they've got one or more children, they'll see their children's name in the upper left-hand corner. They can, then, if they want to get their children's report cards, they can click on Student Reports. If they have any forms, click on that link in the menu. As well, if they want to make any lunch or online payments, they can do that there as well. We here at Orange take school and security safety very seriously. So, if you are a parent in the district and you're around our schools, if you see something, we encourage you to say something. If you see something that isn't right, gives you a funny feeling, something that just seems out of place, we encourage you to reach out to a school principal, or staff members, and SRO officer, and report it. If you're uncomfortable with doing that, you can come over here to our website and click on the Safe Schools tip line, and you can also do that anonymously as well. Parents have also asked us about Chromebook insurance. We do offer it. It's through our partner, Smartech. It is $29 a year. The, it runs from, the coverage starts July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. It covers everything from damage lost and theft. If any parent out there would like to inquire about it, they can reach out to our tech support, and our staff will assist you with that process. We do lots of, Tech Services does lots of projects throughout the year. A lot of the big projects we do over the summer months, the summer break specifically, so that we're not disrupting the teachers and students during the teaching and learning throughout the year. The other reason is the building's being empty. It gives us a little bit of wiggle room around the schools. One of our projects that we work on every year is we will, after school ends, we will go to every school, collect all the Chromebooks. We will clean them, repair them, update our inventory, and get them back into the carts, charging, getting them ready for the beginning of the first day of school in the upcoming school year. Over this summer, one of the projects that we worked on was we needed to update all of our computers from Windows 10 operating system to the Windows 11 operating system as the Windows 10 operating system is no longer supported. A big project that we had over the summer as well was we purchased and implemented the Mascher Brenner Associates MBA Cafe, and that is a student and staff lunch program. We purchased that to help streamline point of sales and to accommodate the state mandates on lunch programs. This program works specifically with Power School. It's very user-friendly. You could have multiple menus. It's a really nice program. Tech Services continues to upgrade our security devices through security grants and any budgeted line items. We also continue to educate and train our staff in all things technology. Specifically, we will train them in how to recognize and avoid any suspicious emails in regards to phishing emails and spam. Specifically, we'll try to train them what to do, but what not to do if they receive it as well. We, our Technology Services team participated in an IT network audit over this school year. And what the audit does is allows us to identify weaknesses in our network as well as to improve security controls and enhance data protection, yeah, data protection. Our web filtering and web monitoring tools, we use our Firewall and GoGuardian. They work similarly, hand-in-hand, to block inappropriate websites, inappropriate content, and advertisements that our teachers and students may run across while they're on their devices. GoGuardian specifically works on Chromebooks, and that has a recovery feature on it. So, if a Chromebook were to go missing, we can enable that recovery feature, and we can track a missing Chromebook within 90 meters of where it sits. We also have a free program, so free software called Bark. And what Bark does is it monitors our data and looks for specific terms or words that are associated with cyberbullying and self-harm. Our students continue to use Quick Cards to help them log in efficiently. The Quick Cards can be used through all students, kindergarten through grade six. It is primarily used for kindergarten through second graders as they're not as efficient as typing as some of their upper classmates. We update our five-year plan continuously and look for, to try to find ways to upgrade our infrastructure and our hardware for any legacy or aging equipment. I've attached at the bottom of this our Technology Long Range Hardware Plan. I want to thank the board, the board members, Dr. Scott Petty, Dr. Russo, Mike Gray, the rest of the staff, as well as my team of tech, for all the work that you guys do to help make us successful in what we do. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Neil, for that. I have two quick questions regarding the insurance. Do you have, do you feel like there's a lot of parents that take the insurance out?
There haven't been a lot that take it out. There have been a couple here and there, but they have asked about it.
Okay. And then, have you had issues where they did not have the insurance, but they've had to pay to repair the computer because it's become damaged otherwise?
There have been a couple of instances over the years where there was Chromebook damage where we've reached out to the parent.
Okay. And just curious, could you give a ballpark figure what that repair might have cost that parent? So, if they had the insurance for $29, it could have saved them how much?
I would have to research and get that specific information for you.
Okay.
Each Chromebook part has a cost to it. So, you know, a screen could cost around $40 to fix. So, if it was a broken screen, they would have saved money right away. But again, I'll have to get specific information for you on that.
Okay. And that's what I was trying to get at. Okay. And then, the second question was SMS texting, because I know there was a new law that came out a year ago, and it actually affected us at my current employer. Has there been any issues with text messages going out at all with the service that you guys are using? They've been going out, right? You haven't had any hiccups or anything?
Yes, we haven't had any issues. Parents have to opt-in to.
Oh, they do have to.
Yes, they do have to opt-in, which is why there's that information page for them to opt-in.
Okay.
We do encourage our, our parents to do that, especially for inclement weather. That's going to be happening soon, so we want to make sure our parents don't miss any of those notifications.
Good call.
Mr. Cap, that was part of my report, just to briefly mention that the winter advisory letter's out. The only issues we've had last year that we've talked about is that parents haven't opt-in. And so, I want to remind parents, all of you watching at home, even if you think you've done it, please do it. I know part of our conversations, we've talked about maybe even doing a test to the entire district of warning parents, "Hey, we're just going to send something out. If you don't get it, that means you haven't opt-in." And so, that's one piece. The other piece that. Because we're gonna, we're gonna send notification of saying there's gonna be a test. Nope. Well, yes.
Yeah.
And then, we'll have it on a specific time and date, and then they could say if they received it or not. What happened last year is a few people, staff and parents, did not receive it, and they, for whatever reason, did not opt-in that, that year. And then, just briefly on a few things that Neil has shared is really the feedback we receive from parents. So, number one, the insurance, we got that information from our parents, so we appreciated them reaching out and saying, "Listen, have you thought about this?" Because that's something that they heard of. The other piece was Bark. Bark is actually a free platform that protects our students. So, we always want feedback. We appreciate it, and some of the times, we actually are able to impact that. And those are just two examples where we have. So, thank you for the parents who have reached out and helped us and guided us. Go ahead.
Regarding the insurance, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but how would parents have known about the insurance but for this presentation? Because is it posted anywhere? This is the first I'm hearing of it. So, where would they find this information out?
So, I, I believe it's in the handbook as well as on the website, but I can get all that information for you to make sure.
It's in the handbook.
It's in the handbook. And is it for Chromebooks that only are taken home? Or is it for Chromebooks that are also used in the classroom if something goes awry in the classroom?
It, it can be for Chromebooks in the classroom as well.
All right. Thank you.
Hopefully, we won't have to face a situation where students are taking Chromebooks again. Maybe if there is a medical issue, that's something different. But the only times when every child has taken a Chromebook home was during the pandemic. So, but accidents do happen. Students are responsible for that, even in the school.
Anyone else? Betty?
I first want to say thank you to Neil for sharing all that information and what's been going on with the Technology Committee or Technology Support Team. But I wonder, you know, when Tatiana just said, "How would you know about the insurance?" I guess I'm, I'm wondering, how many parents actually use the, use the website well? I know that this is just an aside, but my, the Garden Club of Orange has a beautiful website, and our webmaster actually designed a scavenger hunt that they sent out, or they handed out to people, to members, to make them navigate the website. And there was a prize for someone who actually completed the scavenger hunt. So, I don't know if it's just something to think about, because I have a feeling that there are other parents who probably aren't aware that there are certain things on the website that they, that would be helpful to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. I like that. Ken?
I just, I haven't seen it. I don't remember how big the handbook is. But, but I would, I would think if there's something like this that we really wanted all parents to get, we could do a better job than just putting it in the handbook.
Amanda?
I feel like we're all jumping on the insurance right now. But my question is, does this school get any of that $29? And if they don't, and like everyone's saying, if parents were made aware of it, that, "Hey, maybe my child should have that insurance," is that something that we can put an extra few dollars on that would raise money for the PTA or PTO?
I would have to check and see. We have a, a partner in Smartech, but I'd have to double-check and see if the school gets any of that.
In some schools, they, the way they sell it is that the school gets to keep a dollar or two. They can't do it for PTOs though, or PTAs. They have to, it has to be something that the company is doing and saying, "Hey, we're only going to charge this, and you'll be paying that." Right? You can't do it for a PTO.
Ronette?
Neil, thank you so much for your presentation. So, at AMity, I have a junior at AMity. We have to, it's a mandatory form we have to fill out, and we have to say yes or no if we want the insurance, and then we get billed. So, and that's all through Power School. So, it's pretty easy. And the second question, were you guys completely down today? Because I know my district was.
So, there was an issue with ClassLink. ClassLink was down. So, we sign in with a single sign-on to ClassLink. So, ClassLink had some issues. So, people couldn't get into the ClassLink portal, but if they were to log in, say, to Power School directly, they would be able to get into those. It was just a throwaway of ClassLink. For us here, that came back up this afternoon, but we were monitoring that throughout the day.
So, business as usual now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, yeah, Anthony?
Great presentation, Neil. Thanks. Just real quick, which, if any, grades take them home, the tough Chromebooks, on a regular basis?
None of them take them home. None of them.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Again, thank you for the presentation. It was really, really good, and we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right. We will move over to our next item, which is going to be the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Scott Petty? All yours.
So, good evening, board members, and happy autumn to all of you. We recently organized a bus driver breakfast on October 9th. Thanks to all the board members who were able to attend. We want to express our gratitude to our dedicated transportation team for their role in safely transporting our students. Thank you for all that you do. I think most of you know that one year I rode all the buses, and then subsequent years, I would ride a bus here or there. But for whatever reason, I felt like riding all the buses again this year. I think it's been some time, and some great questions on the bus. I might have to take some mental health. One kid thought I was 100 years old, so we'll take that as, as is. But it does get the kids to know. And again, I go back, and it's something I share with my administrative team, is the superintendent profile. For all of you that don't know, when I came on board, there was a superintendent profile. It's about students getting to know the superintendent. And so, I did a variety of things of hopefully students getting to know me. But I just felt like, especially younger kids, besides seeing a tall guy with a suit in the halls, like, "Who is this guy?" So, I'm doing that again. Finished Peck Place, MLT, I'm halfway through Racebrook, and then I'll be headed to Turkey Hill School. So, those are fun times riding the bus. We're already at parent-teacher conferences. It's that time of year we conduct those conferences. Tomorrow and Thursday have been designated as early release days to accommodate these meetings. Our teachers and staff have been preparing and look forward to discussing their students' progress with parents. But again, I want to, especially the parents that are watching at home, you do never have to wait for a meeting to speak to your teacher. I'll say it again. You don't have to wait for these meetings. If something's going on, please reach out. We're here to address anything or any concerns or any questions you have. But tomorrow and Thursday are early release days for parent-teacher conferences. I already talked about the winter advisory letter. That's been posted, but please sign up onto Power School and opt-in. And as we're moving on, it's like even before this board meeting, we all, some of us were talking, like, "Oh, my gosh, it's November. It's almost November. It's almost November." So, there's been a lot of fall fun events already that have been occurring in schools. We've been having a lot of events at some farms and such. There's going to be the parades on October 31st at all schools. The volunteer fire department will hold a haunted firehouse on October 24th and 25th. So, you know, beyond what we've already discussed about the learning that's going on, all these events that the PTOs and A's are conducting or occurring, including the volunteer fire department. In addition, Neil briefly mentioned about safety is extremely important to us. Our schools are currently conducting their first safety, security meetings for their school year and have also begun our crisis and fire drills. I asked Mr. Gray to speak about that in a moment, but I'd like to express our gratitude to the Orange PD, the Fire Marshal's Office for their assistance in ensuring the safety of our students and staff during these drills. As I mentioned, November is right around the corner, and we have professional learning, which will be Tuesday, November 4th. This will be no school for our students. However, our teachers and certified staff will have professional learning, and I've asked Dr. Russo to update not only what's happening in that, but the professional learning that has occurred even since the beginning of the year. And not to push the year too far in advance, but we're already talking about the '26-'27 budget. So, the budget collection letters were sent out to the principals and directors on September 30th, and the final budget drafts are due back on October 31st. In addition, we received the town's request for the Board of Education capital planning requests, which are due November 21st, and Mr. Gray and I are currently working on that request. Also, again, not to push things too forward, we're also talking about the '26-'27 draft calendar. And looking ahead, we've been, we've begun crafting that. As done the past, we're going to share that version with the leadership team and the Orange Teachers League before they are presented to all of you in November. But the board will have a month to look at that, and we typically vote for that in December. A few other things that are going on, we have the Paper Shred Day on this Saturday, October 25th. Like technology efforts of the Orange Recycling Committee, in-rode for the container support for the Paper Shred Day. The Lions Club have been involved in our schools. They've been conducting eye screening to all our students, which is a valuable service to our students and families. We extend our thanks to all the volunteers. Mrs. Hadlock, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how, how's that been going? Are you going to give it in a report? Okay.
I have numbers for you.
All right. We'll wait. And then, subcommittee meetings will be a week from today. We'll send out the agendas and times for you before that. And then, lastly, I'd like to take a moment to recognize two members of our Board of Education. And then lastly, I'd like to take a moment to recognize two members of our Board of Education as they conclude their service to our district as Board members. That's Carmen Rodriguez and Liz Schrempel. When I look at all our Board members, each of you has brought something truly special to this board that has contributed to the board's work. I could say that for each and every one of you. But since it's specifically Carmen and Liz's night, I want to highlight them as their specialty has been, you spent your lives in education. Carmen, your years as a principal gave you a leadership perspective in the meetings that you've attended. You understand the challenges and triumphs that come with running a school. And your experience has always kept us focused on what matters. Liz, your work as a teacher has brought the voice of the classroom into our conversations, especially working at AMITD and that collaboration, reminding us what learning looks like and feels like every single day for our students and staff. From day one, as all of you have, both of you have embodied what it truly means to contribute. There's a saying I've often shared, and Dr. Russo happens to love this so much, the one that she hears me say this. You're either contributing or contaminating, and there's no in-between. When you're in an organization, I don't care if it's a school, your family, a business, you're either contributing or contaminating. There's no in-between. Both of you have exemplified the very best of what it means to contribute, to listen with empathy, to speak with purpose, and to always act in the best interest of our students, families, and staff. You've understood your role as Board members, that being a Board member is really about partnership, working together, listening, and helping move our schools forward in a positive, meaningful way. So on behalf of our entire school community, thank you both for your dedication, your wisdom, and your genuine care. We thank you for your service, and we will miss you. Thank you. And that ends my report. Mr. Cap? Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti, for that. Any questions before we move on to the next? I'll be happy to answer any questions about insurance on the computers if that's.
I feel bad following up that beautiful tribute to Carmen and Liz with the question about the calendar. I'm sorry. Just because you mentioned it. So I know you're in the process of drafting it. We'll start to look at that next month. Today, just because it's fresh, AMITD had the day off. We did not. Any feedback that you've gotten from families regarding that? And any requests to observe DiWali?
We have not. I think the requests were received. I think DiWali was mentioned when we had families attend last year. The intention that I know I'm going to present to BOA and to the leadership team and to OTL before presenting to all of you is doing what we did last year, which is Eid al-Fitr, which will have our professional learning. I'm sure it may make some people upset because usually we have our professional learning attached to Friday. So it's a long weekend for families, but teachers do come in. Off the top of my head, I think Eid al-Fitr for that calendar year is midweek, but that's the intent we're going to be doing. And that will be the only holiday that I'll be putting on the calendar unless the board changes their mind and wants to add additional holidays. But I haven't heard anything, but we may receive some more requests from some families. Any other questions? No, Betty?
Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti, for mentioning our Lions Club service project to do the eye screenings in all the elementary schools. Members of the club and myself spent six days in, each of the six days altogether in the four schools. And we screened 838 students altogether and had 93 referrals for students to follow up with an eye doctor. So I know that it's important for students to be able to see clearly. And for most of those little people, they have no idea that they don't see as well as other students. So it's our pleasure to do this, and thank you for recognizing us.
What a great service, Mrs. Halleck, you and the Lions Club. I always remember, Mrs. Halleck, when I walked in one day and you were giving me an example, and that student happened to have something that popped up, you know, and something like this. And so, and I think when I've talked to families about this, especially the ones that, what did you say, Mrs. Halleck, 93 this?
93 students, yes. That's about, it's only about 12%. It's kind of the way it goes.
And to the point you made, some families don't realize. And again, that could truly impact a student's progression and their learning. So thank you for your service again. And the Lions Club, if you could extend our gratitudes to the Lions Club. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move over to Mr. Gray.
Good evening, everyone. I'll begin, as I usually do, with a grant update. The first grant to update you on is our ARPA Summer Mental Health Support Grant. This is year three of a three-year grant. It's $35,000 this year. We have yet to spend anything out of that grant for this year because it is used to support summer programming. So it'll be in the next summer program next year that we'll start spending that. The ARPA Summer Mental Health Specialist Grant. This, again, is funding an additional social worker in district. We've gone through two years of 100% funding for the salary of this person. This is year three, and it is a 70% grant. So we're funding 70% of the salary from grant, and 30% was put into the operating budget for this year. We also have our Consolidated Title III Grant, which is an $18,000 grant. And this is used for language instruction program assistance. To date, we spent about 2/3 of that, around $12,000, and have about $6,000 remaining. And finally, our Primary Mental Health Grant for the year '26 is a $16,600 grant. This is, again, for K3 early detection programs for emotional, behavioral, and learning problems. And we've spent about $3,000 of that grant and have about $15,500 remaining. For food services, I would just like to remind families, as I always do each month, that updated free and reduced lunch program applications and other materials can be found on our website under the Food Services tab for any families that believe they may qualify for free and reduced lunch. And as I mentioned last month, at the beginning of this year, reduced lunches went back to 40 cents for the past couple of years since COVID. Reduced lunches were also free, but that money at the state level has run out. So those lunches are now 40 cents. Audit and Educational Financial Systems Reporting, or EFS Reporting. As mentioned, the auditors kicked off that financial audit for the '24-'25 school year budget in June. They came throughout the summer on several occasions. They were here in September doing some fieldwork for a couple of days. They were also here at the beginning of October. They interviewed Dr. Scarpetti, myself, a few of the people in the finance office. They will be coming back in October, November, I'm sorry, and finishing up by the end of the year. The report isn't due until February 2nd this year, statutorily. But we always like to have this done before the end of the year, meaning December 31st. That concludes the finance portion of my report.
Thank you for that part. Anyone have questions on the finance? Ken?
The three-year grant that's over, are we planning on picking up that full 100% next year?
We would be putting that into the operating budget, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll do the facilities portion of the report. And as Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, we are getting ready for the annual capital planning process for developing a five-year plan of short-term projects for the schools. He and I have been developing a list of those projects. We look forward to meeting with the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee next week to look at that list and make appropriations to that to move forward to the town. It's due November 21st. That'll be sent over to the Finance Director, Mr. Cifarelli. And then we would present to the Board of Finance in February on those projects and what the rationale are for the projects. Dr. Scarpetti also mentioned our schools are currently conducting their first safety and security meetings for the school year. We conduct these meetings at each school three times a year. In attendance at those meetings are obviously the principal, school staff, the custodian, our school security officers, members of the Orange Police Department, namely our two SROs, Detective Ardbane and Detective Bailey. Fire Marshal's Department is also there. The purpose of the meetings is to review all of our procedures and plans, make adjustments as necessary. We do make adjustments with staff because staff changes from year to year. And also procedures because there's something called an all-hazards plan that we have to develop every year. And it gets turned into Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security. And there are certain statutes that go into play year over year that change the plans a little bit. So we do have to make those changes annually during these meetings. We're also going to be conducting our first lockdown drills of the year in the coming weeks. Again, that's in collaboration with the Orange Police Department. And these are announced drills. The teachers go over the drills with students, beginning on the first day of school, actually. They tell the students what the procedures are, how they should lock down, where they go, what they do. So they've had a good month and a half or so to prepare for that. We do the drill. It is announced to the students and staff over the loudspeaker so they know it's a drill because it could be a little taxing if they weren't aware of it. The police department comes in, they clear all the rooms. We account for every person in the building, that's students, staff, visitors. And then at the end of conclusion of the drill, the principal will make an all-clear announcement. And then they send a notice home to families that afternoon, letting them know the drill has taken place and giving them a little bit more information about that. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions? No, Betty?
I was going to ask you about those drills. Do we still do fire drills too, right? Have any of those happened yet?
Yes, so we have to have at least 10 drills a year, two of which are lockdown drills, the rest are fire drills. We try to do one fire drill every month, plus the two lockdown drills. We end up having about 12 drills.
Right.
And it's great that you asked that because part of that all-hazards plan is a drill log, which has to be turned in by June 30th of each year for each school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No? All right, thank you again for that.
Thank you.
We'll move over to Dr. Russo.
Good evening. We'll begin the curriculum report with some updates with professional learning. As per our professional learning calendar for the month of October, we scheduled 14 sessions over seven days, two sessions a day. We've completed 10 of those, four to go. And for November, and the focus was on math and integrating the illustrative math resource into our curriculum. For November, we have 12 sessions scheduled over six days. And we are looking forward to those. The teachers have provided lots of great feedback. They are grateful for the opportunities and the support to integrate those resources into the curriculum and into their lessons. We are currently finalizing plans for the November Election Day professional learning. The leadership team will review tomorrow. We did consider recommendations from the Professional Development Evaluation Committee. We had originally scheduled for a full day for English Language Arts, but we will now focus half a day on math and continue with the work that we've been focusing on. And half day for English Language Arts to really secure those instructional routines that are linked to the new storyboards and the vocabulary work and language comprehension that we've integrated into those lessons. We spent this past Curriculum Wednesday focusing on one of our Long Range Plan goals, which was to shift all of the standards-based grading to relying on the proficiency scale, which moves away from that 100-point punitive scale. And so all areas, all content areas, now have shifted to that scale. And so we spent Wednesday making sure that all teachers were aware of the standards that were prioritized for reporting on the report card. And we really have to thank the IT Department because there is a ton of behind-the-scenes work for that to happen. We were so happy to see that our teachers were so successful with the digital administration of the DIBELS, or Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills Assessments. Those, that administration period was so smooth. We'll continue to collect feedback from the teachers during the middle of the year and end-of-year assessment periods as well. And we also have professional learning that is provided by the Connecticut State Department of Education. We have a team registered for something called ReadCon or Read Connecticut 2.0. And our leadership team will also be attending the Science of Reading Masterclass, sponsored by CAPS or Connecticut Association of.
Public School Superintendent.
Public School Superintendents, which Dr. Scarpetti is a member of. And finally, we are so excited that the Orange Historical Society this week will be welcoming our fifth-grade students to the Brian Andrew House. And we really appreciate that they accommodated the trips this year for the fall instead of the spring to align with the Social Studies Unit. And that concludes my report. Mr. Cap?
Thank you for that. There are a couple of really nice Eagle projects that took place there at the Brian Andrew House, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a new one. A new one is starting soon. Yep.
Oh, there is?
Yep.
Okay. So they're really going to enjoy that. Amanda?
I have a quick question about the ReadCon 2.0. I was reading about it in the board update. And the team that you have going, is there a representative from each grade? Or how did you pick who was going to be getting that accreditation?
That's a great question. We, there was a similar opportunity from the Hill for Literacy and a team from Racebrook, and Mary L. Tracy went. And so now for the ReadCon 2.0, a team from Peck will go. And we are going to wrap around Turkey Hill with the Science of Reading.
Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you, Dr. Russo. I'm very interested in what you talked about with the report cards. And I understand that the teachers feel comfortable. How are parents being informed about the changes? Or is there going to be some information session for parents about how the report cards will be different?
So when it's time to send out information about the report card, we have videos that explain about the proficiency scale. And in that communication, we will communicate that now all subjects will be moving to the proficiency scale as opposed to that former 100-point scale.
And just for my own satisfaction, the proficiency scale includes mastery or developing and exceeding or?
So it's all parts of a standard independently.
Okay.
So performance at a 3.0 level is all parts of a standard. A 2.0, oh, and it has to be independently. 2.0 would be any part of a standard or a prerequisite. And a 4.0 would be increasing the rigor of the verb so that it would entail more demonstration from a student or integrating different standards. But the nice thing is, is that you're not averaging scores. So I'm just going to make this up. But say on one demonstration, somebody gets a 50, and then you get 100. Well, when you're averaging, you're lowering your final score where this allows for growth, and you're not penalized for learning. And so it's more of a growth mindset for students.
No, I like it very much. I just wanted to make sure parents are going to be able to understand the shift.
And Mrs. Halleck, just so you know, I've asked Dr. Russo to reach out to Mr. Ziman. That's going to be one of the agendas for the subcommittee a week from today. And again, subcommittees are not just for those members. Those are for anyone else who would like to attend, if you want to join. And then as we finalize, a little tweaking of that final, that's when we communicate it to parents as Dr. Russo just shared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz.
Hi, Dr. Russo. You, you mentioned some videos that would explain to parents how the standards based grading works. I have never seen anything like that, where could we find that?
Those are all included in, in a communication that goes home in the school newsletters. But to your point, like about the insurance, we can always think of additional ways to make sure that, you know, everybody is aware.
So you're saying like once a year, something goes home where our parents can get a link to these videos?
The link, I believe, is shared with, with, with the newsletter prior to every report card release.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? No, okay, thank you for that report. We'll move over to Mrs. Edo.
Good evening. As Dr. Russo shared, on November Election Day for our Professional Development, the special education staff will be working alongside our general education colleagues, engaging in the district's math and English Language Arts initiatives. Our school psychologists will be attending an annual school psychologist in service regarding advanced cognitive behavioral therapy, otherwise known as CBT, for school-based populations. School psychologists use CBT as an evidence-based intervention to support students with mental health, behavioral challenges such as anxiety, trauma, or school avoidance. School psychologists receive training to apply CBT and other strategies in the school settings to improve student outcomes and well-being. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? No, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Edo, for that. Okay, we will move on to Board and Business here. First item on Board Business is Discussion and Possible Action on the 2026 Board of Education Meeting Dates. If you guys clicked on the link, you should have seen the proposed meeting dates. I made a suggestion for December that we would meet on the second Monday because of the Christmas holiday and it falls the week after Hanukkah. So that's why I came up with December fourteenth. But if you guys would like, and you guys are-
That was going to be my question, why are we switching that?
Oh, that's why. I was trying to look out for everyone. Try, yes. Because I know that always does become an issue every year, so.
No, but I mean-
And I know it's a busy week, so.
Right, but I guess, I'm also thinking about, there's a whole bunch of holiday concerts and other things going on at school. So I guess they're going to have to plan around the fourteenth now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was thinking that and it was just the one day. It's just moving it up just because I'm, I'm afraid that if we were to meet on our traditional third Monday, it's, it would be the twenty first and that's a, going to be a bit, a busy week for everyone. And I don't know if people want to be here late on that Monday, but it's up to all you guys. So, no. If you guys would like, we could vote on it now, approve it, or we can do it next month. It's up to you guys. How you guys?
I'll have to think about it.
You want to think about it?
No, no, I don't.
Oh, you don't?
I think we can vote on it.
You want to vote on it?
I can.
You want to vote on it? You want to vote?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The January meeting is, doesn't conflict with MLK? That was my only concern.
No, that would be Monday, that's why it's Tuesday.
I was just double checking.
Just to know, the fourteenth is a Sunday.
Of the twenty sixth? Of twenty twenty six, not this year. Are you on twenty five or twenty six?
It's good. Okay. No, that's okay. You got, what are you guys thinking? It's up to you guys, if you guys want to make a motion to approve it as is, or we can wait until next month.
I, I'm fine with it like this.
I'll make the motion.
Susan will make a motion, Ken will second it. Any discussion? Okay, approved?
I'm not approving.
Opposed? Okay.
I'd, I'd rather meet on the twenty first, but it doesn't matter that much.
Okay, okay, so the motion will pass on that. So you didn't vote? Abstain?
No, I'm not, I'll agree with it.
You're going to, she's going to agree with that one.
I was in the middle of doing, I'm in agreement with it. So just add me to that.
Okay.
Nine yeses. Thank you.
Okay, so we got nine yeses on that one. Okay, thank you for that. Let's move on to our second item, which is Policy Second Read. Orange Board of Ed Policy four one one eight dot nine dash four two one eight dot nine, Personnel Certified Non-Certified Duties of Personnel. Do I have a motion to accept the Orange Board of Ed Policy four one one eight dot nine dash four two one eight dot nine, Personnel Certified Non-Certified Duties of Personnel? Liz, Ken second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Did you vote, Liz? You did? Um, that's okay, so you approved?
I got two no. I did the same.
Okay, okay, so unanimous, okay. That's okay, that's okay.
Missed the vote.
Okay. I, I'll give you another try on this one. Policy Second Read, Orange Board of Ed Policy four one one nine dash four two one nine, Personnel Certified Non-Certified Electronic Mail. Do I have a motion to accept the Orange Board of Ed Policy four one one nine dash four two one nine, Personnel Certified Non-Certified Electronic Email? Susan? Carmen, second. Any discussion? All in favor? One hundred percent unanimous. Moving on to our next one. Policy Second Read, Orange Board of Ed Policy four two one seven dot three, Personnel Non-Certified Reduction and Support Staff. Do I have a motion to accept the Orange Board of Ed Policy four two one seven dot three, Personnel Non-Certified Reduction and Support Staff? Liz, Carmen, I'm sorry. You guys, yes. Carmen? And Ronette, will you second? Okay, because that's what I'm hearing. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous as well. Okay. It is, it has been. Okay, let's move over to Standing Committees, Finance and Operations. Susan.
The Finance Subcommittee met prior to this meeting. We reviewed, approved the prior meeting minutes. We went through the financials, we went through the cafeteria. Mr. Gray did a fantastic job as always. We did discuss the audit as well as the grants update. That's it.
Any questions? No questions? Okay, thank you for that report. We'll move over to Personnel Policy Transportation, Mrs. Headlock.
Yes, just for clarification, I think people at home might sometimes wonder, how can everybody vote so easily on these policies? But they need to remember that, first of all, I meet with Dr. Scarpetti. We review policies that need to be updated or new policies that have come about. We select those for our Subcommittee to then read and meet about. We have that meeting. After our Subcommittee meets and we discuss the policies and make amendments or changes, they are sent to the entire board for a first read, giving everyone time to look over the policies, ask any questions, whether by contacting me or contacting Dr. Scarpetti. Finally, they become a second read and at that time, once again, there's an opportunity to discuss and have, ask any questions. Most of the time, those questions have already been asked, which is helpful. And we're able to decide whether to approve or not approve the policy. As you can see, this month, we just had second read policies. That's because we, the committee did not meet, but we will be meeting on Monday and reviewing a number of policies. So I hope that is helpful for people who are listening. And thank you very much, Mr. Cap.
Thank you, go ahead, Susan.
So just to know, and Betty, I know you've said this before, but all of our policies are posted. So if anybody was interested in any of the policies, especially since we posted for first read and they'd like to read it, they should.
You're talking about on the board website? Right, on the, on the, yes, school website. Under Board.
OESS, and it's under-
Under Board of Education. Thank you, Susan.
Anyone else? Okay, moving over to Buildings and Grounds, Anthony.
As Dr. Scarpetti and Mr. Gray have mentioned, the Building and Grounds Committee will meet also on October twenty seventh. At that meeting, we'll review the capital items planned for submission to the town.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for that. Curriculum Instruction, Mr. Ziman.
I'm sorry to have missed last month's meeting, especially since the topic of math came up. We often hear people say, I can't do math, I heard it last month. Now, look, everybody is afraid of trigonometry, but these people are talking about computation and that's just criminal. It's especially important when it comes to parents because we know from research that academic anxiety can be passed on from the parent to the child and then become a self-fulfilling prophecy. One of the best things about being an adult is we can often avoid things we don't like. We're good unless our children bring it back into our lives. For a long time in this country, we didn't know how to teach math properly, leading to people suffering from this relatively common math anxiety. To resolve this, the first step is to realize we read and write using an alphabet of twenty-six letters, which can make hundreds of sounds, but computation has an alphabet of ten numbers. That's it, zero to nine, that's all there are. We may move them around or break them apart, but in the end, six is always six. You can trust math. My first position was as a sixth grade teacher, a grade in which as a student, I was a spectacular failure. Sorry. Okay, I got to get this out. Yet, when I had to face it again as a teacher, I was at first impatient with my students because I couldn't believe how easy it was. I would urge any parent to forget any negative thoughts they might have about math and just try it again. And let me know.
Any questions? No. Oh, Ronette, I'm sorry, okay.
This is out of order and I apologize, but I'm, I'm just plugging in my calendar. And the September date is actually on Yom Kippur. And I think our schools are closed that day. September twenty first, twenty twenty six. So is that a no or a yes? So we would have no school on the twenty second then? Okay. And Ken would know, so.
No.
Okay. If you say it's okay, it's a lot of pressure.
Mr. Cap, Mr. Cap will double check. And if there's a conflict, we'll bring it back to the board on next month. We have plenty of time. We can readdress it next month.
I always thought, and I'm not Jewish, I haven't observed any of their holidays, but I always thought that the evening when it started, people get together and celebrate. I, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I know there were football games this year that were changed because of the evening. Okay.
Yeah, but our meeting's at night.
But it wouldn't be, September doesn't get dark until later. But yes, that is a good point.
Okay, just wanted to bring it to your attention because I just saw it right now.
Okay, no, thank you.
And I would agree that it is right to be sensitive to our population.
Yes, yeah. Okay, yeah, we can definitely address that in, for, on our calendar for next year, definitely. Okay, thank you for both, both of you guys. Let's move over to ACES, Susan.
Yes, sorry, hold on, I forgot about ACES for a second there. Not that I would forget about ACES, but I did have it up, so. ACES met, oh, I wish I had glasses. Thursday, October ninth, in Hampton. And, oh, I did write some notes. We, we have three board members that we celebrated and honored for their contributions to ACES that are either not going to be on their own board next, as of November, or have, basically, they're three that are not going to be on their board. In addition, we talked about the ACES Chase Academy Construction Project, which is an enormous project because the buildings that are in, Chase Academy is in Waterbury and it used to be a private school, it was called Chase Collegiate. And with us, it's a sixty-eight, we've added nine, we've added ten. Next year, we'll add eleven and the following year, we'll add twelve. So the kids are kind of going through it, will add it as they're going through. And it's great, but the buildings are older and not necessarily compliant. So this is an extremely large project that we have in place. And so we went through some of the buildings and what's going to happen and what are our plan Bs if something doesn't come in in time and we need the buildings and all this other stuff. But it was a good review of the entire renovation project. And that was done by our architect and builders that are starting to work on it. We also have eighty-eight Basset Road, which is in North Haven, which will be predominantly a special ed school. And I got to tour it after our board meeting yesterday, last Thursday. But what was great about it was that there were about six board members with me. And we hadn't seen the building at all and it's truly going to be state of the art for some of them. And it's, it's great for the kids. There's lifts if, if needed for certain areas for therapy and all those other things. And that will be open by July of this year. So they'll have summer school there and they'll be moving, starting to move things in as of, I believe, February. In addition, Early Head Start has been doing a lot of work and is still at capacity, fully, fully, full capacity, which is good. And then the other thing to know is that our current Executive Director is retiring at the end of this year. So we have started a search committee to find a new Executive Director. So that's sad because Tom's been great and he's done a great job. We're trying to talk him out of retiring, but he hasn't, he hasn't agreed yet. So, and we also voted on the board calendar as well. And it's kind of the highlights, lots of openings if anybody's looking for a position. We seem to have a lot of transition of things, so. And we do have a surplus also, almost a seven, almost a five million dollar surplus currently. That doesn't mean that'll stay because our magnet schools are not fully enrolled. And so we, that number will go, most likely go down unless we get more students. That's it.
Any questions?
Susan, I'm just trying to remember, the North Haven site, is that part of the old gateway? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, actually, gateway's still there as we've been doing the renovations. And so when they, they will ultimately go out and then we'll renovate that space as well.
And the Chase, it's a campus, right?
It is a campus.
It's multiple buildings.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's, I can, next time I can bring in the, the plans, you guys can take a look at it. Actually, I had it in the car and I forgot to-
That's okay, I just was ju, just trying to remember, so, thank you.
Yeah, there's, I want to say there's at least seven or eight buildings. There's one that's enormous, really old, beautiful, old building, beautiful moldings. And that building will get remodeled first. And then the other buildings, that currently is, is ready to be remodeled because that's where their cafeteria was. So we put a cafeteria in a different building and so that's ready to go.
Yeah, and this is not the former Edison School that was at Meriden? No, no.
No, it used to be Saint, Saint Margaret Mary, I think.
Okay, yeah.
Saint Margaret something.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cap, if I may, that date would have to be changed for the twenty first. We were looking as the board members were reporting out. We don't have to do it tonight, we do it next month, but that would have to be changed. So it will be the Tuesday, the twenty second, where we would have the board holiday. I mean, board, not board holiday, the board meeting.
Board meeting, okay. So we'll add that to the agenda for next month for the revision, okay. All right, and then right before we close, I just want to say it's been a pleasure for having Liz on the board and Carmen all these years. You know, you guys have been fabulous. You contributed a lot to our board- You contributed a lot to our board. You know, I got to work with both of you, more so Carmen, being on Buildings and Grounds, being my sidekick. We had to arm wrestle a few times on some stuff. She would always win. But no, I really appreciate having you guys on the board and everything that you guys did. And we're definitely gonna miss you, so. But thank you.
Thank you. Can I say something too?
Sure.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I figured it's a great opportunity. I guess when I started four years ago, I had no idea what I was getting myself into. And, you know, it's been a great experience, honestly, all around. Vince, it's been awesome working with you and the rest of the directors and the board as well. And one of the things that really stands out to me about the experience is, you know, we get here, but we're not divided by our politics or affiliations. We're actually united because we're all parents, we're all neighbors, and because of this experience, some of you are now my friends and my acquaintances, and I'm gonna miss all of you guys, and I had a great experience through this, so thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, Carmen?
It's been a pleasure to serve our community. I'm a longtime resident. My children went through the system. And when I was interviewed, I, I was asked a question, and I, and my answer to them was that I believe that when something is not broken, we don't go looking to fix it. And I think that that is so critical moving forward because we know that many of our young folks that are moving into the district and moving into Orange, they come because of our schools. So, given the fact that that is basically the driven factor or driven force of our community, because that's why we came, I think it's important that we continue to, to make sure that we guard it so that what worked for us and for our children continues to work for the future. And I also believe that every time we come together, we come together and we pledge allegiance, and we have a mission statement. And I think that that should not go on deaf ears and that we should not practice something or speak something that we do not uphold. And so, going forward, I think it's important that we continue to push the agenda of keeping the integrity of our, of our system and our district and the people that we serve. These folks that served to me, well, when I ran a school, those were my daughters, those were my sons. And the way I wanted people to treat my sons and my daughters, I said, "That's the way they're gonna treat my teachers and the staff." From the person that picked up the paper, from the custodian, to the bus driver. I think it's amazing. I was, I was telling Dr. Scarpetti, when I came and, and celebrating the bus drivers and celebrating the folks that just are your essential workers every day, those people are the ones that really basically make the, make the schools, and, and, and they are not getting the pay that we as professionals do. So, I think going forward, you know, I want to honor the staff. I think you folks deserve more than what we're giving you, and I think basically, we don't want to fix anything that is not broken. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmen. Liz? Again, we're gonna miss you guys a lot, so. But thank you both.
I also want to shout out to Darlene because she does so much behind the scenes. I'm gonna miss you.
She does. A lot of behind the scenes. Okay. Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Ken? Susan, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Meeting has ended at 8:16 PM. Thank you.